It is called order. Pledge. What do you lead us to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all? It's eighteenth of May, twenty twenty, town council meeting. Been awhile. Thanks to Mr. Kobe. But we'll get a little bit of business done. Minutes for March sixteenth executive session, we need a new motion to accept those.
Make a motion we accept the minutes from March sixteenth.
It's actually April seventh, wasn't it?
There is March sixteenth, April seventh, May first, and May seventh. Should I do it all at once?
I did all of them.
Okay, we need a motion to accept the minutes for March sixteenth. Executive session, April seventh, special meeting. And special meeting on May seventh.
I make a motion that we accept May sixteen, April seven, May one, and May seven.
Second.
We've been moved in second to accept March sixteenth, April seventh, May first, and May seventh. Minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have motion carried. Is RTS here?
Yes.
Come on up.
Hello.
Hi. Marshall, come on up too, because we, we, a lot of the problems that he's been dealing with, the, with the garbage issue. Joe, why don't you go ahead and open up, because you did, you called him and everything, and what was going on?
What we did is we had some complaints about the garbage not getting picked up. And most of it was where we make the phone call, and then they decided to figure out when they're gonna come and pick it up.
For the large items?
For the large items, but we give them one anyway, when you get your garbage picked up, correct? Is the way that we're just doing that.
Correct, yes, yes, yes.
And then, uh, what we were running into was, people were calling and making appointments, and appointments weren't being, weren't being showed up to pick them up. And in the meanwhile, we was trying to enforce our ordinance to where, you know, we have to have, make people, uh, not have that stuff heard.
Yes, absolutely.
At the same time, so the problem that we're running into is, is if you guys aren't picking it up, and he's trying to write citations, and the homeowners are turning around telling him that, you know, we called but nobody came, we have a big confusion going on there.
Yes, so, uh, hello everyone, my name's Brianna, uh, I help out with RTS here, so I think a, a problem that I've kind of talked, you know, with our holler and our customer service team and tried to figure out the issue, and I think part of it is residents maybe not knowing that they're supposed to contact us when they have that large item. So we have, I had our team put together flyers, which I can have delivered to all of the homes, or supplied to Town Hall, whatever you think is best, I can give you the digital version as well, if we have emails to send them out to. Um, just kind of reminding that we do the Friday pickups, as long as it's scheduled, I mean preferably before Thursday evening, but like Thursday at twelve o'clock, letting us know that Friday it'll be picked up. And so we just ask that because, um, if it's not called in, our driver doesn't know that it's sitting outside, and I know the last few weeks we've had, um, I think two weeks ago, we had two residents call in, which was great, and we, you know, put it on the route. And then the drivers, sometimes if they see something large, they'll write it down, but with that, we have the chances of mistakes, because that's just the driver going on the Tuesday route, and then trying to remember, oh yeah, this address had missed. So if we get everybody on the same page of just calling in for their one bulk item, then we will definitely have it picked up.
Well, it seemed like it'd be a little bit easier if you just made it to where you came every Friday regardless, that way nobody would even have to call you then.
So the issue with that is, we can't send a garbage truck to go down every single route and do the same route, um, but when we know that it's there, we can have it go directly to the house.
When, when, the problem is though, is the marshal has made up flyers, and he went to all these houses, and he give them these things to contact. I've called RTS numerous times in the last couple of months, Brian has called numerous times, for items that were scheduled for pickup, that these people had. Because he's out writing citations for it, and, and warnings, and he says, these people have already contacted them, RTS never showed us to pick it up. That's the problem, it's not a problem with flyers or anything else for being contacted, the problem is RTS is being contacted, and they're not picking it up.
And the flyer issue was, was, was heavily put out there, the flyers around the trash cans, it's said many times in regards to having to call RTS to schedule that pickup. The problem is, is right now is, they, RTS is failing to come out on Fridays and pick them up after being notified, and from, on a couple of occasions, it's been three, four times that they get contacted, and still have failed to go and pick up that item.
And is that, and just so I understand, and I can go to my superiors correctly, um, is that in the case when, if they are being called, say, month, or Sunday through Friday, for that following week?
There, there's some people that have called on the Tuesday pickup, they put their item out on Tuesday, and it stays there, mattresses and stuff like that, am I correct, they've, mattresses and stuff that have been, that sat out there, Friday comes, they don't come. The next Friday comes, they still don't come, and they've called again to reschedule another appointment, and that's, I, they, he can explain better than, than I can with, with all that, but that's where the problem is, is RTS is failing to come and pick up the item when it is scheduled by the homeowner.
So, so we realized you had the problem, and we came up with this idea of, okay, if we're having a problem with you coming out on Fridays, what about, when we contacted, Joe contacted RTS, what about putting a large dumpster down by the sewage plant, that we could monitor what was going inside? And then RTS would come pick it up whenever it's full, you know, that would eliminate having to call in and everything and stuff, and eliminate your trucks driving all over the place, we thought that'd be a win-win situation. We were told point blank, they weren't gonna do that, so, we're, we're saying, we want our stuff picked up when it's supposed to be picked up.
Absolutely, and I a hundred percent hear your concern, and I think, one, there seems to be an issue on, um, the phone calls getting called in, because I've certainly hear, heard a mix of, you know, we have things that are out, but we didn't receive the phone call, so that's something that I'm gonna relay on my side, absolutely, um, and clear that up, and as far as the dumpster, I can definitely go back and ask that, I know with COVID going on, that that was a concern at the time as well. And then, um, just issues in the past, not saying that we can't do it, because we're here to supply your needs, um, but having residents from outside the Kingsford Heights area coming and dropping items in that.
We don't allow that.
Awesome, so if it's, can be a restricted area, I think that that could definitely help.
Absolutely restricted.
Yeah, that would be, uh, that'd be great, I'm the holler.
Okay.
So, yeah, you know, we could place a ten yard container, and I could just have my guy go there every Friday and empty the can there, and then it'll all be cleaned up.
Well, I think a ten yard would be kind of small, it won't end.
No, not if we do it weekly, it'll be forty yards of material.
Well, sure, if you can do it weekly, that'd be.
Yeah, and that way the material doesn't sit around, and animal and critters get into it and stuff, they could haul out every week, just, you know, animals will love to find a little, those little couches and stuff like that.
Our biggest concern is making sure that these people don't have garbage sitting in front of their house.
No, absolutely.
You know, that's what we're worried about.
It would be a great solution, you know, especially with COVID and stuff, with us touching mattresses and stuff, the driver'd get a little freaked out.
Sure.
So, yeah, we could do that, as long as you monitor it, we have another community, um, Sherrill Creek, where they have, it's behind a gate, and it, the resident has to show that they live there. And then they can throw away, the only other, the only problem that we had with that, but they straightened it up right away, was different remodeling their home, so they would empty their whole, you know, bathroom in there, or turn out their kitchen and put it in a container, that, that wasn't working well, and then it creates a mess, so.
Which, in that case, you know, if there is a resident who is doing a home renovation, they can give us a call too, through the same means, and we can get them a specific dumpster that wouldn't be filled to the city, obviously.
Uh, that, that's a, a great solution, as long as you monitor it, I think we did, we weren't sure if you guys were gonna monitor it, and, uh, yeah, you could put it behind lock and key, or, and then give the, the homeowner the key for it, they can go get rid of their material, and we pick it up every Friday, my driver will have a key for the gate too.
What would we probably have to do, because we'd have to set it in our sewer plant, that'd be locked up on the weekends, so what people would have to do is make sure that they came during the weekend.
During business hours.
Yeah, and that's something, if, if that's what we decide on, I can absolutely change this verbiage, and I can get that out to you if you want to use this, um, material as well.
Is that alright, Amber, or do we have to do something with the contract on that?
Does it modify the contract? I'm not sure what your contract says.
Right now, the contract reads that each resident gets one bulk item per week, so as long as, I guess who's regulating it wants to say, they aren't bringing their whole house and dumping it in, I think that could be cleared up that way.
And then how are you gonna retrieve it, or pick it up?
Um, every Friday.
Every Friday.
Okay, from their house?
Uh, from the dumpster at the sewage plant.
I think you'd be fine, as long as there's no problem on your end, then.
And, and I'll, I'll run it by my team as well, but if there is some amendment they'd like to make to the contract, we can send it over and have you read over it.
So we just need a general consensus then?
Yeah.
So we're all good?
So then we can, we can make sure that they still have that one item that they can put out during the week also, right?
So this would be replacing that?
Our problem is it's just the mattresses and stuff that they're not taking, so that dumpster that you're bringing is actually for mattresses and larger items than, because a lot of people have smaller things that they put into the garbage can.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, that's fine.
We understand that you're.
Your contract said that you're gonna pick it up.
Well, yeah, that's just what I was gonna bring up.
That would eliminate everything that's being called in at that point, just that dumpster would be used.
Well, a lot of people have smaller things too, that they.
Then we'd have to take it down, though.
To, to the dumpster.
Well, that way it keeps the streets clean, you know, at all times, so it's only you guys. But we'll go either way, and we'll, we'll work with it, you know, until we get it all figured out, for sure.
We'll try that and see how it works.
And maybe on the weekends, the police department could have a key for, you know, and, I mean, it's up to you guys.
Well, we can, we can regulate it towards eight, you know, nor, during normal business hours, Monday through Friday.
Yeah.
Some of those larger items, I mean, it is.
Yeah, and what I'll, we'll do is, we're gonna contain it with auto lid on it, so that it can take that bigger item in, I might even put two six yard containers that are a little bit lower, and that way they're easier to load. Alright.
Sound good.
Right.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, we, they just took.
I will have, um, I'll speak with David Siegel tonight as well, who I think you are in contact with, and, uh, have that all sent over, but that sounds great for Warren, especially with him approving that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, what they can also do is, maybe leave a sticker of some sort for the homeowner, to let them know to contact, that there's a container at, uh, well, you guys could probably do that in your water bill too.
Oh, yeah.
Alright guys, thank you.
Thank you.
We need to accept the wastewater treatment plant's bid of seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to HRP Construction. This is, the bids were all came in, they opened the bids, and then the weeks, then the engineer said, okay, this is the winning bid, so we have to accept that as accountable, so we need a motion.
You should, you should make mention of that in your minutes, that is the lowest, most responsive bidder.
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid.
HRP Construction.
Yes.
In the amount of seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
I'll second the motion.
We've been moved in second to accept the sewage plant bid of seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, the lowest bidder, HRP Construction, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's have a motion carried. Just a moment, you need that. Need a motion to accept bidder of Walsh Kelly was the lowest bidder on our paving grant, in the amount of a hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and ten dollars.
I make a motion that we accept Walsh Kelly's bid of a hundred and forty-eight thousand, thousand, three hundred and ten dollars.
I'll second the motion.
We've been moved in second to accept Walsh Kelly's paving bid of a hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and ten dollars, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Alright, where, where are you guys paving and when?
Jason knows exactly what the roads are.
Um, we're paving, um, Knox, um, the Curtis apartment road, going into the apartments.
Jefferson.
And, yeah, a little section of, well, actually, it would be all of Jefferson, which is kind of the horseshoe road behind the school there.
Yeah.
Uh, but, kind of a bus route, and then, uh, Evanston, um, from the Boulevard.
To Knox.
To Knox, yeah.
I thought Grayton was in there somewhere, that's why I was asking.
No.
So you're not in.
Not yet.
No, the, the, uh, that was the old, one from the old council, when it had all those other roads and stuff.
Okay, yeah, I thought Grayton, that's why I was asking, so I could.
That was a, that was a half a million dollar grant, and it was a two hundred thousand dollar, uh, uh, match, and the town didn't even have the match that they put into it, so.
Yeah, I, I, that's what I heard, but I didn't know if that was, if Grayton was still in the.
That went by the wayside, but the grants that we're getting now are, they're still going at seventy-five, twenty-five, so we only have to put twenty-five percent in, so they're, and we're, excuse me, at the next meeting, Paul Vincent's going to, uh, put another, he's got another one put together and stuff, that will start for next year, at the seventy-five, twenty-five, and we've actually got a little bit more money that we can actually put into that. And if it keeps up, we should be able to get around a million dollars worth of paving done in four years.
Excellent.
At twenty-five percent.
Problem we found out this time, we only had so much money to get, so much done, when they put the bids in, we could only, you couldn't do.
You only get so much.
You couldn't, you couldn't do intersections here and intersections there, you had to do a road.
You couldn't put patches in.
And they're doing, they're doing the roads by a numbering system, so they're going in, and they're, they're looking at the worst roads, and they going from like a one to ten, and they say, okay, this road will last another five years or so, this one here is falling apart if we don't do something now, and they try to make everything above a five or a seven.
Okay.
So, that's what our goal is, to get up in that number area.
Good, very good.
But there's, there's more to come, next meeting, we'll, we'll go after some more. Dwayne, reconnect fee.
Yeah, uh, I was, I, I'd like to talk to you about changing our re, 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 reneck fees, reneck fees. Uh, because all the money that talks, for the guys to come back again, back again, and I think we could raise it about fifty dollars, if we could.
I'm against it.
It's thirty-five now, right?
It's thirty-five now.
Because we're overburdening our people in the community, we gotta, we were all raised five dollars, I mean, you, you gotta run people out of town, I mean.
It's already ran a few as well.
I'm not.
Sorry.
I was only wondering.
You're rooting people?
Yeah.
At this point, I, I agree with everyone, it's kind of, we've, we've already hit these people with a hundred and eight percent rate, eventually, once we get the I U R C out, and it's gonna be, we're gonna hit them with another, I, I, I know it's a minimal, but it's still, it's still a raise. I, I mean, at, at this point, I, I, I just think that's kind of like jabbing people, I, I understand that the thirty-five dollar fee is there, and, and I do understand that it's kind of a, a pain for the usual people that don't want to come in and pay their bill or whatever, but we keep on hitting them with the thirty-five dollars, they're, they're gonna get sick of paying the thirty-five dollars, just as much as they will the fifty.
They're already paying the late fees in.
They're paying the late fees, and then they get thirty-five on top of this, so.
I think the problem is, is he's got the regular ones that, and I've been into the office, where the minute they're shut off, they're not paying their bill, and I know, and then the guys are having to come back, and I get the frustration.
Yeah, but I can, I can tell you over years of experience and stuff on the shut offs, that, you know, seventy-five percent of the people that are shut off, never get shut off, and they get their payment, the reconnect fee, so, it's just a standard.
Yeah, I thought they put a stop to that, but with the last council saying that that was not, because a lot of people came in complaining about that, and there was actual something in regards to, unless you're actually physically turned off, you cannot charge that reconnect fee.
Haven't seen anything like that.
I remember it being discussed.
It, it was discussed.
Yeah.
Because what it was, is it was listed as, if you were put on the shut off list, you paid that thirty-five dollars, we could not by law do that, so.
That's, I think that's what it was, was that a meeting?
Until you are physically shut off, you pay that thirty-five dollar reconnect fee.
So the town was collecting thirty-five dollars from people that were not shut off.
Previous administration, maybe Amber can put, shed some light on whether or not it is a legal issue or not, because I, I know that it was, I know that I remember being at a meeting, that it was brought up that thirty-five dollars was not being charged unless you were physically turned off, and then we had to send the guys back out because of legal issues, someone had brought it into, and we had to pay back some money or whatever.
I mean, if you look at the plain meaning of shut off, it's, it's, you're shut off.
But what, what we're saying is, people were paying a thirty-five dollar reconnect fee.
And they weren't shut off.
Just for being put on the shut off list.
I don't think that's enough.
You can't leave it.
I don't think it's enough.
That's what it was in the past, is what I'm saying.
Been for the twenty years I've worked.
Years past, exactly, see.
Me too.
Well, you can forget that one, Dwayne.
Yep, that one's done. We're moving on.
Thirty-five it is.
Presentation of claims, in the amount of three hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-three cents, any questions from the council on the claims?
I did not.
I do have one, I don't know where my papers at. I'm looking at this one, I think we've both looked at it before, and, uh, this is Rita Hicks, now that's the lady that comes into the office.
That is who helps Dwayne.
Alright, I see that we, we paid her, uh, nine hundred and seventy dollars, now, was that for one month, or was that, what was that for?
Healthcare?
No, that was.
Which one?
Rita's.
It says training.
Oh, that's, that teaches me.
Right, but he's asking, is that for one month, nine hundred and some odd dollars, is that for one month, or?
It's about monthly.
No, we spent close to fifteen hundred dollars on last month with Rita.
Well, I'm seeing the next one too, the other one is a four hundred and ninety-three though.
It's about months a week, so.
What is a four ninety-three for? It says bank, it says bank recording or something?
It's on your front page, front page.
She re, she reconciled all of the bank checks, but she was in there for quite a while, trying to get those, uh, figured out, because they were done incorrect and what.
But that was only one trip to the bank?
No, she had, she had to, we do all the checks, outstanding checks and everything, she had to go through.
So different things she's done, you know.
How much longer are we gonna need Rita?
I hope not soon, I, I need a couple more.
How long has she been there, she's been there for a couple of years now, hasn't she carried?
Yeah, she, she was Olivia's psychic, yes, she was.
So she's been there for almost three years now, working on our books.
Oh, wait, wait, soon I gotta get rid of her, so.
Well, the thing is, she's probably making anywhere from fifteen to sixteen thousand dollars a year, coming in and doing, helping us with our books and everything, and plus it's costing us more money for Dwayne to be there, plus it's costing us more money for Laura to be there, plus it's costing us money for, Tamita to be there. And just, I'm trying to think of just about how much money is actually going to the clerk's office, to maintain that clerk's office.
Well, what you have to think of, if she's getting us back where we need to be, and she knows what she's doing, then I think we ought to keep her, till we get all this stuff squared away.
I'm not saying get rid of her, I'm just saying, how much longer are we gonna have to be paying somebody?
Well, I'm sorry, leaving her out, so.
I think if we get all of the clerk's personnel together, when Rita's here, not just you, but maybe put it, maybe put a sign on the door and close it for a couple of hours, and let Rita talk with Laura and, and Tamita, and, and try to base it into the fact of where everybody in the office that works there knows what's going on, and knows how to do the finances, because if one person does it, you're, you end up being gone, we're in a wreck, always train your personnel, so if something happens, we can move forward. You've got a couple of smart individuals in there that you could put a whole lot on, and take a whole lot off your plate.
More for backup than it is anything else, we should never, should never have one person only that can do the job.
That knows everything, yeah.
It's always a bad thing, because if something ever happens to you, then we're, we're in the exact same boat that we've, that we've been in now for the last several months, which is trying to get you up to speed into, into that process, we should never have just one person in control of anything. It should always be a backup, somebody there that knows how to take over your job, and so on and so forth.
Yep.
Yeah, and you got, you got two women here that pretty well can help you out there, that's for sure.
So is there a motion to pay the claims?
I make a motion to pay the claims, in the amount of three hundred and forty-seven thousand.
Forty-seven.
Three hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-three cents.
We've been moved in second, we pay the claims of three hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-three cents, so, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pay the claim. Jason, employee phones.
Um, is that something we, do you want to report as well, or?
Uh, no, let's just, let's just.
Cause I got a few things on the, with the phone right now. Okay.
It was your idea that it was brought to me, so.
Okay, um, so I had, uh, talked to Dennis briefly about a, um, instead of us having this, uh, track phone, it would be possible that, um, each employee get a fifty dollar cellphone stipend every month. To help pay for the cellphone, considering it is the, uh, employee's personal phone that we're using for work, typically, there is some type of, uh, cellphone stipend, um, provided, um, the town has always paid for the cellphone, here it's in the past.
What happened to the walking talkies?
We, we still have the walking talkies, but.
Then why do you need for us to pay for a cellphone for you guys?
Well, we gotta be able to come in when your power goes out, you're gonna want me to come and put your power back on, aren't you? So I'm gonna need a cellphone, and then, the guy that I called to help me come in is gonna need a cellphone, so the one cellphone really doesn't do any good, because when I need help, I go to call the other guy, well, it's his personal phone, he's not on call, well, he may not want to answer his phone.
Answer his dog. What would make the, what, you're saying that you have to have a phone, right? To say that you do have a phone, why do they have to have, you know, we do have this other phone, I mean, if you have somebody to call, that's who you're gonna have to call anyway, right?
Well, that's who, that's who the resident's gonna call, but then when the resident calls Vic, he's on call, and it's power outage, well, who's Vic gonna call? Well, Vic's gonna want to call me, well, I'm not on call, I don't have a cellphone, I'm, you know, so how are you gonna get ahold of me? See what I'm saying? I mean, you can run into that.
We, we, I guess we can, alright.
We got to go back to where we started and stuff, when we took over on the council and stuff, the town was, the last council was paying seventeen thousand dollars a year on phones.
Well, see.
We're listening to two hundred, two fifty a month.
Yeah, but if we do it for you, we have to do it for all the employees, so you're looking at going back up to about five hundred dollars a month.
Okay, you got seventy.
Here's, here's the thing, here's, here's my issue with, with, with the stipend, I gotta go to work every day, I don't get a stipend for my personal phone, and I get called in on my phone to go to work overtime, as, as a thing, that, that's just a normal part of your job. In our handbook, it states that in order, as a job requirement, that you have to have a working cellphone to be able to get in contact with you, if you don't answer your phone to go in for overtime, then you have to move on to the next person, but in, in order to work here, in order to work any job, you have to have an active, working phone, so whether it be a landline or whether it be not.
I understand that, and most of the time, whoever's gonna answer the phone regardless, because they want to help the guy that's calling them out, but there could, I'm just saying, there could be that issue to where it's, I mean, one guy's on call, nobody answers, then.
Then I, we, we have, like I said.
You're paying for it, I mean, you're pretty well. You're paying for it, I mean, you're pretty well required to answer your damn phone at that point, I mean. You better.
But then there's, but then there's the also the issue of the person that's not on call, that gets called and has been drinking or something of that nature. You know what I'm saying?
Sure.
You, and they're not able to come in anyways.
Yeah, yep, absolutely.
Neither here nor there, I I mean, we we've, we have a phone that we have as the on-call phone. The on-call phone that we have, you're required to answer that phone when you're on call. To, to, we also have the radios for, that we're supposed to be having. When we're around here.
We use them here, yeah.
I get it, I I really get where you're coming from, Jason, but I'm I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm not gonna be for a stipend at this point. Especially with a freeze on our, on our budget. Now, I mean, that's just, we just got rid of spending seven, seventeen hundred dollars a month, and now we're gonna go right back up to five hundred dollars a month. Because if we give it to you guys, we have to give it to the clerk's office, we have to give it to the police department, we have to give it to everybody that works for us.
Aren't they all on call or what, I mean, why do they have to all have one?
The police department has their on-call as well, Dave's on-call all the time. I mean, if he gets called in as as a town marshal, he he's, he, he has to come in.
I can see Dave having a phone then, plus the utility guys. So that's three hundred dollars a month.
Down at the waste water plant, there is no phone, I do all my business on my personal phone. I've got calls prior, we got all people and that's.
You don't have a phone at the sewage department?
Don't have one.
No, it was disconnected a couple of years ago.
What?
There's no phones.
No phone down there. No phone, but it don't work.
Who did that?
I have no idea.
We don't have one in any department, nobody's got a phone.
Well, I'm just saying.
Well, then what's tricky about phones?
Yeah, well, yeah, save money.
I use my personal phone for to call, we call the cars, we call the dumpsters, to call manufacturers, I use my personal phone for all that.
And we need to fix that issue because there needs to be a phone down there.
Frontier says fine.
I was gonna say we.
I'd rather not have a phone at these buildings and give us a cellphone stipend, I mean. We're gonna pay for a phone that never gives you.
We're in a money crunch and we're trying to save every damn that we can get and see when we save a damn, we wanna throw it away and that for.
Well, we all figured it was gonna take a year before we could get back on our feet.
That might be something we, I.
They went for a spending freeze, so.
We were, at this point, we needed a year, at least a year to figure out until we get everything back on paper and back up to speed. I mean, this might be something we can try to revisit maybe next year, but I, at this point, I I don't think it prudent to. Go back to spending almost five hundred dollars a month for phones.
Okay, we'll move on then, we already had a council. Did they, no.
He said he had some other.
And and it's, he can do that in his record report. Uh, it's kind of weird, one, sorry, what?
Randy not having a phone down there, that's kinda weird.
Uh, oh, well, well, you guys address that issue tomorrow and stuff. Water and.
And sword.
I got a cellphone.
We, we need to have phones in the offices. And and I just, I just don't.
Well, they won the electric too.
Why they, uh, there used to be a phone in the electric.
Yeah, there was one in every place.
Well, once they wants their cellphones, they just.
Wasn't the three three oh nine from the town hall over at the, uh?
No, I think this, no, it still had its own.
Yeah.
Yep, it still had its own line.
Let's look and see what it's gonna cost to put these phones, phones in and stuff versus the stipend and stuff, and we may wanna revisit this at the next meeting. How about that? Cause I, cause what we're gonna talk about next is the community center phone, and it's kinda odd that we're getting into that, but the community center phone. We really don't have any use for here.
Really, you don't?
And we're paying about fourteen hundred dollars a year to have that phone here. I think it's a waste of money.
Yeah, because everything goes through the clerk and, you know, you go and you rent the place, you go right to the clerk.
Well, let me ask this question then, what's, I mean, just thinking about it, as far as back to the phones, that we was talking about the employee phones. What about maybe our, our supervisor and of the departments, that we take care of them guys? I mean, if we, if we can get rid of a phone over here, it costs a thousand dollars, then we should be able to say something to the guys that are supervisors and say, now, oh, we've got something.
You don't want to put that in the car for a rainy day, you want, cause you got it saved, you wanna blow it?
This is, this is general fund money here, we're talking utility money.
Is that the difference between the two?
Well, it's different, different area, this, this is tax money right here versus the, versus the utility money.
Well, that's not gonna work then.
I think, I think if we check and see what's gonna cost to put phones in the offices that that should have phones in them. Versus what the stipend is gonna cost, then we revisit the next meeting and stuff and say, okay, there's gonna cost this much money to have these put in, we could get phones for this. And the stipend and revisit it, so let's, let's put that up, everybody okay with that?
Yep.
So the community center phone, I, I, what do you feel about that?
Uh, unplug it.
We'll remove it.
Just take it off, yeah. I think, I think we're all agreed with that one.
We gotta call the phone company, remove it.
Do we get a motion on that?
Yes.
I make a motion that we agree. Get rid of the community's cellphone, I mean, phone, land phone.
I'll second it.
We move to second, that we remove the community center's phone, all in favor? Both. Phone removed. Ordinance number twenty twenty dash eight. Authorizing the executive and delivery of the third amendment to the power sales contract between Indiana Municipal Power Agency and the town of Kingsford Heights. Whereas the town of Kingsford Heights, the member is municipality owning and operating on January first nineteen eighty, electric utility. With furnished electric served to the public and purchased electric power from public utilities. Whereas the member is required by law to provide his customers with adequate reliable and economic supply of electric power and energy. And previously determined that individually member was not financially capable of providing. The planning, financing, locating and building of the needed new facilities for generation and transmission to satisfy future requirements of its customers. And whereas based on its obligations to serve its customers and the above considerations, the member previously determined that it was best in, best interest to join. With other municipalities in the state of Indiana as a member of the Indiana Municipal Power Agency. For the purpose of undertaking the planning, financing, ownership and operation of a project of projects to. Supply electric power and energy for its needs. And whereas the agency and the member entered into and having carried out their respective obligations under the supplemental contract. And power sales contract as heretofore amended and supplemented. Each between the member of and the agency attached by reference here to and incorporated by reference and made part hereof. And whereas, under the power sales contract, the, the agency agreed to sell and deliver to the member. And the member agreed to purchase and receive the, from the agency, all electric power and energy which. The member required for its operation of municipal electric system for a term of expiring on or about April first twenty forty two. And whereas the agency is requiring ownership of new power supply resources that will require the issuance of a debt in the long term. At least thirty years amortization of debt service and associated costs to provide the most economic and reliable power supply to the member. And other major members of the agency, and whereas it is the best interest of the agency and the member. To enter in the third amended, amended, ammendatory to the power sales contract between the agency and the member. To establish a term now expiring April first twenty fifty, to allow the agency to issue new debt, long-term amortization. That would extend beyond the current term of the power sales agreement. And whereas the third amendment is attached here to and incorporated herein, exhibit A. And whereas the member desires to amend the power sales contract to extend the term in the manner described above. Whereas member has reviewed in the original contracts, the third amendment, and have obtained independent and advice and counsel. With respect thereto, where appropriate, and the member has had the opportunity to review the original contracts and the third amendment with the agency. And whereas, based upon the foregoing facts, the member of the, this ordinance hereby finds and determines to ratify the original contract. Provide the third amendment attached here to exhibit A. Now therefore be it ordained by the town council of Kingsford Heights, Indiana as follows. Before mentioned findings and determinations set forth. And where, whereas sections immediately above are incorporated herein as it fully set forth herein. By this ordinance, the entry of a member, of a member into the original contract. And its performance of the terms and conditions thereof and hereby ratified and confirmed. Member is authorized pursuant to this ordinance to enter into the third amendment in substantially the form. Attached here to exhibit A and bounded by the terms of the conditions and original contracts that's supplemented and amended by this third amendment. By virtue of this ordinance, the town council president of the town of Kingsford Heights is hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver. And the clerk treasurer is hereby authorized to attest and seal the amendment. This ordinance shall be in force and effective from and after this date of its passage. Passed on this, if we accept it on the eighteenth day of May twenty twenty. So we need a motion to accept.
I make a motion that we accept for this twenty twenty dash double eight.
On its first reading? Been moved to second, we accept ordinance twenty twenty dash zero zero eight. Authorizing the exec, execution and delivery of the third amendment to the power sales contract. Between Indiana, Indiana Municipal Power Agency and the town of Kingsford Heights. All in favor? Both. I have it, carried on first reading, second, uh, title only. Ordinance twenty twenty dash zero zero eight.
I made a motion, we accept ordinance number five twenty zero zero eight on second reading by title only.
Second.
Been moved except, and second, then do we accept ordinance twenty twenty dash zero zero eight on second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Both. I have it, second read. Motion for ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero zero eight, third reading.
I made a motion, we accept ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero zero eight by title only.
Second.
Been moved to second, we accept ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero zero eight on its third and final reading, all in favor? Both. I have it, motion carried. Police Department. You can talk this time.
Will you hear from me the first time?
I nodded my head a little bit.
Okay.
Oh, I thought you'd fall asleep.
All right, so, uh, I got a couple of things, I'll go over this stats real quick. For April twenty twenty hundred twelve, I'm sorry, hundred and twelve calls for service, twenty two case reports, three arrests. Uh, nine warrant requests, five traffic citations. We assisted, uh, had nine other agency assist, all to the sheriff's department. One accident report, and then the bottom one I'm gonna talk about here. Total draft sixty three ordinance violations. Everybody knows, uh, we're just coming out of this COVID thing, uh, we were working under the, uh. Basically, what my office was getting and most of the offices were getting within the area. Information was being passed out from the state police to the local counties. All that was coming to us, and we were all kind of following the same guidelines with which we were trying to eliminate as much personal contact face to face. So what we did is, uh, of those sixty three, sixty one of those ordinance violations were sent via mail. I had spoke to the attorney, she approved a, helped draft a letter, kind of a generic letter where I could just. Put the general information in and then sixty one of those went out in April. And then since that time, about the beginning of May, we started, uh, I started following up on those. And a good, a good chunk of have taken, the, the letter did it. We've been doing some others, some citing here as of late, in addition to some of the new stuff popping up and. There's still a few on the list we gotta get checked off, so, um, that's kind of the goal we're, we're getting from. Trying to get this, this initial sixty one on the list that I had, get that squared away. And then, of course, you know, I mean, everybody knows there's, you, you, put up one fire, a few more pop up, and that's kind of what. Kind of what we've been dealing with, so we're really trying to get that under control. So, any questions about any of that so far?
No, it looks like you've been busy.
Yep.
Yeah, we had a, had a good month, so.
Yeah, I got one question, with those calls for service, did, are, is that sixty three on top of?
No.
Calls for service, so when you put, when you actually issue an ordinance violation, you're doing a call for service?
No, no. So this, like, so for instance, so like these sixty one letters, eh, no, we didn't.
Now. No, I, yeah, I hit that, but I mean, when generally, the other two that you did, the other two that you actually evidently did issues or warrants. Or whatever it was that you did with them, issued them citations, did you, are those in the call for services number?
Doubtful. Um, what I've been doing is, uh, for example, one day last week, I went out, I took about three hours in the morning. And I went around and I hit thirteen places. And what I do with that, because, I mean, as you know better than anyone, dispatch doesn't like getting bothered a whole lot during the daytime, and rightfully so. So what I do, uh, with those is I keep a tablet with me and I write down the dates, times, addresses, and what the violation was. And then our reporting system, just like any traffic citation, we have a spot where you enter citations. And that's how I crack, keep track of the ordinance violations that way.
So the, so the RMS under yours is recording a, like an incident number or something of that nature to apply to this?
Yes, but it's not in the, I, I'm not saying a hundred percent, uh, because there are times like, you know, I've had a couple of houses where. Things aren't always the most pleasant to all call out on, so, so somebody knows where I'm at, you know what I'm saying? But generally, like, if I'm going around just tagging doors and stuff, I don't call that in and create a call for service through dispatch.
My concern with that though is, is the paper trail in regards to how, how, if, if somebody takes us into court for saying that we're harassing them. How do we actually defend without having like actual documentation showing that we were actually at the residence?
You have that in, like, I. So, it's so different than citations, really.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanna make sure is, is that there's, the paperwork is there. Too many times we, I'm not saying you, but too many times balls dropped around and that's where a lot of incidents come in where there is no paperwork to.
Yeah, no, there's, there's a, there's a trail on everyone we get.
One of the things that you're gonna be, uh. Probably already tasked into and stuff is the weed ordinance. The weed ordinance needs to be revised. I took a look at it and it's been revised by. Oh, my gosh, it, it takes like seven or eight steps. You have, the police department writes the warning and stuff, and then they've gotta go to the clerk's office, then the lawyer's gotta go out.
Call for us to do that in the ordinance.
No.
There's no mention of the police department in that ordinance anywhere, and that's, and I'm not, I don't wanna try to shun our duties off somebody else. We're fine doing that, I just, when I brought that to your attention, we're not doing it right by the ordinance, and that's gonna get us into. But yeah, on, on the ordinance, there was, I believe, if you follow it to the letter, must go identify somebody having high grass. They can drag it out twenty more days before anything, any action is taken.
When I worked for the town, the town marshal was tasked with the weed ordinance. And when that got, obnoxious weeds got six inches or more, the marshal's department went and wrote a citation for it. At which point it was delivered to the clerk and everything fell in the clerk's lap from that point on. The clerk sent out a certified letter saying you had seven days to get that cleaned up. The clerk sent out a certified letter saying you had seven days to get that cleaned up and mowed, or the town would come in at a hundred and seventy-five dollars per lot and clean it up for you. That ordinance sometime over the years has changed and I think we need to redo that. What's your recommendations on that?
I
Cause we're gonna get, we use, we did it twice a year. The marshal's department went out twice a year and stuff and did it because it's such a huge task. And you don't, you write one warning.
Correct.
And that warning doesn't mean that I write you a warning this year and I have to write you a warning every year after that. We don't have to hold your hand.
We'll see what we're doing.
The statute says you have to give notice and opportunity to abate it. And it's very specific about what you have to do and it just matters who you guys want to assign to give that to. But that notice needs to be given and then assuming the resident does not do what they're supposed to, then the town can go on and mow and it could be leaned at a later date if they don't pay the bill. So you're absolutely right that a hundred and seventy-five dollars, that could be assessed against them and they don't pay within thirty days and it can become a lien.
What we
Do you have to do that, you have to do that each and every time or?
No, so the first initial notice says that this would be a continuing notice and it would serve for the, throughout the remainder of the year. So if you do it right the first time, you don't have to do it again. But you do have to keep records of
Cause a lot of our properties are rentals, we've got to keep track of, we have to serve each person, correct?
Correct. You're gonna serve the, now each person.
Here since I've been here is you go around, you tag them. And then next week you go by and tag them again because they mowed, but now they's mowed again, so you know, we were going by the same houses every week and I, I don't recall. I think we mowed a few properties, but it wasn't, wasn't much, you know.
Well, I'm sure, I, well, I know the last council they didn't have to. I mean, the town council members are out reading meters for right now, you know, and just
Yeah, so.
Amber, can we draft something up with the, with the, what you were saying, we?
Why don't you let me see what you have in existence already and then I can tell you if it needs to be cleaned up to near what the law currently states. And then if, if you have forms that you use, do you have forms like notice and orders to abate forms?
Ordinance taken.
We use
That won't be enough, I'll do the, I'll do the form letter for you.
Can you, can you send that over to?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'll just need the ordinance and I can get you up with the forms and the There's still
We want that changed though.
Yeah.
I think, was that my understanding because it calls, it calls for the street department to do that right now and I'm fine with us doing it, but I don't think.
I, I think the
Who mows?
The town.
What department?
Streets.
Okay, so it really could be up to you guys to designate who, but you gotta keep little detailed records, I mean, someone's gotta give that notice, make sure that it was sent out.
Once they went through that process, typically we would get a work order from the clerk's office staking. So we had a paper trail basically to go mow whatever property address for a weed ordinance violation. And then we would sign it once we mowed it, so we had something.
I mean, I feel with us starting it and keeping the
I, I would like to see that because I know I did it for all those years and kept the records and knew what everything was.
So we just go through the clerk when it comes time, after you get their notices, come to the clerk, you can give a word.
Yeah, so what happens if it's a smaller property, then their equipment can't get it, they don't push them on?
Weed eaters.
Weed eaters? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For a hundred and seventy-five dollars.
We've had the weed, we've had the weed, whole backyard, like, whole backyards and we can't get mowers in and stuff.
Just knocking down with weed eater.
Take a while, but yeah, we've
You've got the ordinance.
Done a lot of them. There is quite a few of them.
Anything else?
Yeah, on, while we're on ordinances, real quick, golf carts, just want to throw out there to everybody. I've had, you know, we did push the issue real hard because town hall was closed. Got to get, from here on out, we're gonna start taking them, so they need to be registered.
Is there an age limit driving?
Got a license driver.
Driver's license.
We've dealt with that.
Well, you're gonna have a lot of problems because you got kids driving them every day.
We, we've had Joe in the test, we've, I, he's called one in, I've had probably five or six that I've nabbed so far with kids driving them and
And fifteen people on it.
Yeah, fifteen kids on it.
Yeah, so the ordinance is real clear, you have the licensed driver.
It's like a circus.
And when registering of it's gonna be a yearly register, registration fee?
Yearly registration fee and then they, I, actually, the process I've done is kind of following the ordinance. I have a form that I fill out, it checks off all the mandatory equipment. We document through insurance information, I got that on file, then we have an incident with a golf cart, we can correlate the number, we got everything there we're done. So that was that on golf carts. I'm gonna go ahead and bring you guys up to speed, I did report this to Dennis, we had some damage done to one of our squad cars. We had a, an inmate that decided he was gonna try kicking our windows out. So he, he got ahold of the only thing that he physically broke was the microphone cord on the radio, but he did a lot of bending damage, so you know, they had computer scan, the radar, one of the visor lights. So we took that over to Bartronics, got that addressed right away and fixed, the bill's been turned, been turned into the prosecutor, he's in custody, so.
Did, did you get restitution request from victim's advocate?
I haven't got, I, I sent that in middle of last week and I don't know, are they at the work and full staff in there yet? At the prosecutor's office?
No, I don't think so.
I think the offices are just opening back up Monday, I think they just
No, I know, I sent it to the secretary, my hope was to have something you guys by the, have a stack of them to you guys by the first of the week.
Let me know what you said. Go back to your squad car damage, I just want the people to know how that was damaged. It wasn't our officers that had our car damaged. Our officer made the arrest, arrested the suspect, put him in the backseat and the county officer was watching this subject while all officers went out and got information and stuff to, to fulfill their report. While the county officer was watching this subject, the subject got, decided to get his handcuffs out from underneath of his legs and crawled into the front seat of the car and then got out and took off running. They apprehended him the second time and put him back into the car, at which point he started kicking all the equipment and radios and everything else. This wasn't, this was, this damage was caused because he wasn't being watched properly. So, yeah, it's kind of funny and stuff, but that little, that little tirade, that little tirade cost us five hundred bucks to have repairs done, so. But that's, that is part of law enforcement, so.
Five hundred bucks, we'll spend, save you.
Utilities. Jason, you've got any?
Yeah, we've just been basically doing a lot of mowing, weed eating. Just trying to make things look nice out there.
Let me, let me interrupt you, I can talk on behalf of the council, place looks great. You guys have did a stupendous job in the last four months, great.
We appreciate that.
This place
I wasn't here for four, for the last four months, I've been here a few months.
Go down and look at it now.
I'm seeing a, a big improvement, like I said, we're, we're same thing Randy's doing down there, cleaning and tile are over, our pressure filter over here at the water plant, we, we was able to scrub the lower portion of it to, to make it look like it was white instead molded or something.
Well, it's nice to see a little bit of
We've got a lot of work to do.
Little bit of pride being put back into the town.
We've cleaned up the fences and stuff over there at the water.
A lot of that grass last year, or even before. It was like, you know, it was getting cut, just looked like he was
Whoa, there's a lot of it, what I've, some of the things I've found is, I think somewhere along the way when, when the town lost Glenn, which did all the mowing. I think he was really the one that did most of mowing. And a lot of the things that we would mow as the town, just because it looked like this little strip right across the street here, in between the sidewalk and the tree lawn. Although they will, you know, wait for a formic to mow it, you know, well, the towns always mow that. Same thing when you go farther down toward range, you know, you got that both sides of adhesion there, we've always mowed, you know. So I think a lot of it, people just didn't know, nobody knew what to, you know, they, they did their best on memory on what needed to be mowed, the field by your house. That's been kind of questionable, nobody seems to know. So we've got that squared away.
Since you went there, let's, let's address that because I was gonna ask the
That section that you mowed that portion? That's all ours.
The section that's not mowed right now, which is owned by Stanley Evans.
Closest from Renee's to the portion that's mowed.
Yes, Stanley Evans, Stanley Evans got into a horrific car accident and was airlifted out. He is not going to be able to at this time be able to get that mowed.
No, I just seen him a little bit ago, he's early, I mean, he's, he's walking and stuff now, but
Yeah, how does the council feel about taking our finishing mower over there and knocking that down once or twice while he's healing up?
Well, I think what we should do about that, we ought to make him pay for it.
I'll do it.
Why do you think we have to talk to him at that point?
I mean, he's got boys. And they're grown.
Do they live with you? Do they live with you?
One of them does.
I don't think I've ever seen
Not sure about the second one. I think it would make the
I think Stanley's the only one I've ever seen out there that mows.
It would if it was mowed.
Yeah, that was another section right there at that new section from Renee's, that little
Well, there's still, there are more that we don't own anyway, isn't there?
No, we own that.
Do we own right across from the circle?
Yep.
I thought lawn owned it.
We own
We own that whole chunk, you mowed like half of it and then I come back and mowed the
My son's mowing half of it, yeah.
Okay.
We own the portion right across the street from my house, the town does. The portion across from Justin's house is lawns. Then Stanley owns the little portion behind that, it's really, really weird.
I questioned that.
And then we still own the rest of that lot next to the store. Right, I mowed that and I told the guys that needs to be mowed.
Yeah, that's part of the town still. The concrete pad though is, is lawns and that one other corner of right there is just that, everything else, or that little wing section around them there is ours.
Ben kind of showed me where his ended, so I, and I just assumed the town was still on that.
Well, while we're at it, I think that pad where the lawns have, there's grass and crack, I think a letter should be drafted to him to have it cleaned up, it's terrible.
I think
You better send it to her.
Last year, you guys were, last year, cleaned that up, didn't you last year? That was all weeds.
It's getting that way again.
Right, but that was, yeah, that's lawns.
Well, they cleaned it out the other year last year, didn't they?
The town did.
Was he charged for it?
Nope.
We had some downtime, we just wanted to go in there and clean it up because they got it swarred. We rolled that ice sword that time.
Does anybody know who owns that investment company that, the property that Legion bought some to? I don't know, I don't know who owns, I can't remember the name of the investment company that owns it, but
You're talking about where the old store was?
Yeah, where the old store was.
I can't remember the name of who owns that, but it's still under their, their
Some group there, didn't she?
I don't know what, yeah, she still owns it.
Yeah, if you look it up, it's under the name of some investment company, which I've tried to contact many times and I just never get a phone call back, so.
So then what was your question again with the?
He wanted our town guys to mow his property.
I, I personally would think that would be a good idea for, to have that done. If he's, if he's, you know, he's incapable to get it done.
Well, here's what I saw.
Well, I can't, I'm doing mine, but I do it.
Our guys, I think you're setting a precedent, if you stirred that, you're gonna have trouble.
I would say if, if he's not, if he is unable to do it, but he does have, can't, you know, family that can actually take care of it, the family should be first on the list.
If I had out, because I know he's got two boys.
I mean, if he was by himself, if he was by himself and had no, nobody else to actually do it, my mind might be a little bit different, but I, I do kind of, we are, we're setting a precedent for somebody that's unable to do it. That does kind of set us up for
Because you have to look, you got a lot of older people here who can't get out and do, mow their property, so I'm saying you're
I mean, I do understand that, I do
I brought it up, I was looking under a small town aspect, taking care of people that got doing accidents and stuff, right, but that's, that's fine, the majority's against it, so we're okay.
I'm not against it.
I wasn't against it.
You won't or you will?
I was not, I, I, I think we should, I think, yeah.
I mean, if you're against it, I mean, you shouldn't
I'm not saying that we have to keep it up, but while the man is down, it's good faith that Our guys are mowing that strip right there down Park Road, they could just cut over and mow that. It's not, like, they're not out and about, you're already out.
Well, it's gonna take five minutes, ten minutes with their mowers?
But what I'm saying, you're gonna set a precedent, you're gonna have other people come in doing the same thing, you're, you're opening up a can of worms.
Well, he has an aspirin.
He has aspirin.
It's gonna fall on the, on the board, that's what I'm saying.
Well, let's just want to reach out to me and I and see who else wants to help out.
I'm all for helping, I'm all for I'm all for helping, I really am, I, I'm not saying, I'm not unsympathetic to his situation. I understand the guy was in, and I would love to be able to help, but if there is, if there is family, our that should be who first is taking care of his properties and then, and then
The relationship that they have on it. We don't, we don't know their situation.
You're right, I, I get that, but I mean, if it becomes an issue, then I guess you could address it later on, because like I said, I'm not opposed to the town doing it, but I am if there is other people that is in his family that can take care of it before, I can see if it's one person on his own that can't, that simply just can't do it, or his wife can't do it because of the accident, she's taking care of him, but I mean, I would at least hope my family would come and take care of my property.
Let me use a rider, I'll mow it.
I say, I, I can go over my mower and knock it down.
Well, maybe we'll just get together then.
We'll all get together, we'll just take care of it.
Me and Joe get together and take care of it.
I'll help mow.
We'll grab our weed whippers.
Get a rider?
Jason, I'm sorry, did you have anything else?
Yes, I do, um.
Kind of went off
I got a, in your guys' packet there, I got a uniform quote, that's something that we're interested in going with, it looks like it was, I don't have that other copy, fifty-six something a week and that is
Any of this?
That is
Fifty-five, fifty-five weekly?
Is that what it is? Fifty-six, fifty-five? And that is ten uniforms for everybody. Which is standard because they come pick them up, or it's actually eleven uniforms. And then they'll pick them up, launder them and then they'll bring them back following weeks.
That's fifty, fifty something, what, per man?
No, that's
Per week?
That's per week for five guys.
Fifty-six, forty-two does it all?
It's about ten dollars a week per
Per man?
Per man, roughly, I mean. And some change, maybe eleven dollars a week.
It's pretty cheap.
My opinion is that these, these are employees of the town, they gotta look professional, when they're out here walking in these yards, they gotta have something on their shirts that says they're with the town of Kingsford High Utilities. And I just think it's another way of moving forward and being more professional in what we do. That's my opinion, unless the rest of the board.
I'm behind you one hundred percent.
Oh, yeah, I, I
I would like to see them
I would have to say, it identifies them when they knock on the door, it shows that they're from the town of Kingsford Heights. It shows that they're not just somebody in the area such as Lipscomb.
Walking through their yards or something.
Walking through the yards and stuff like that, but don't know who you're from.
And this takes care of electrical, because you guys can't wear, you guys gotta wear the cotton, so
Yes, that's what the, it's FR pants, they do not make an FR short sleeve shirt for Cintas rental program, but they do have the long sleeve FR, which is why we throw two long sleeve FR in there for everybody. If we got an outage or something, you slip your long sleeve on and, and, because I'll, I'll, I'll have one here.
Are they fluorescent shirts?
No, the ones I looked into was kind of like what we used to have, just a navy, like a navy blue with a navy, kind of like the pants they got on, navy pants. And then that also included a jump, two jumpsuits for us crawling over houses. And then that also included a, uh, jump, two jumpsuits, um, for us crawling over your houses.
And this money is coming out of where?
It comes out of utility. Well, you could take out road and streets. You could take out, uh, water, electric sewage, road and streets. It's not a significant.
So you have to have this for, been with them for three years, right? You had the contract for three years.
Uh, I think it said fifty weeks on the, uh.
It said thirty-six months.
Yeah. Yep, yep, yep.
Well, they'll be looking good through thirty-six months.
They'll be looking good through our term anyway.
That's right. Come on in, bigger.
You need to make a motion?
Yep.
Yep, I would like to make a motion that we, um, go with the uniforms for the utility departments.
I'll second it.
And move in second that we go with the uniform rental pricing, uh, from Cintas Uniform for the utilities in the amount of fifty-six, forty-two a week. Realizing that may change a little bit here now.
Yeah, and so everybody knows, these guys are by far the, the cheapest. I just went through this open in Walkerton, got us uniforms, and since then. Cintas actually got the, uh, Indiana State bid, so they're, they're providing all the state workers with uniforms now, and I mean, there's nobody even remotely close to touching their prices.
All in favor?
Aye, good job.
Both? I just have a motion here, increasing the shirts.
Um, the next thing on my list here was our comp time. I know we visited that and there was a discussion, and I'm not sure whatever.
Um, we're gonna, we're gonna hit all that up under the, uh, uh, old business.
Okay, and the last thing I have is there was some mentioning, uh, kinda rumor that we may be able to hire a part-time worker, mower, for mowing for the summer.
Oh, that was that whole summer help thing.
Would you say how much? Let me ask you this. How, how much of a detriment would it be for our guys to do the mowing this year? Since we're in such a budget struggle for the first year and maybe we kick it off in twenty-twenty-one and.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's not a prob, that's not the problem. It's not a problem for us to mow. It just, uh, it is, this time of year, it's really time consuming. So it eats a lot of our time with several guys running weed eaters, mowers, and whatnot, so. But, yeah, I know, I don't, I mean, we don't have a problem doing it. We've got five guys, I mean, we can, we can make do. We can make do for the, for the summer, I'm sure. But like I said, it, it, it's not that we can't do it, it's just, it does take, you know.
Well, I know it's a quick set out and stuff, and I know looking at the, uh, finances, the, the, uh, we're starting to see the bounce back and stuff.
Slowly.
But.
Sure.
I'd like to see the bounce back come a little bit more myself.
That's why I asked, but the, if there's any kind of, what, what are we?
Yeah.
What are we looking at this far? But, yeah, I, I agree, if, if we can get by this year, then.
Twenty-twenty-one's gonna be a whole new year.
It could range so much pretty soon.
This year.
Yeah, I hope so.
Year of repair.
We'll just cut it short enough, it won't grow back.
That's right.
Anything else?
Um, the burn pile.
Uh, I spoke with Justin and Justin said he would go down there on the weekend and stuff after it dried out a little bit and they'd take care of that.
Okay, because I know Joe is wanting that bad wood burn, so. Okay, that's all I have.
Randy?
At the wastewater, we been busy power washing, just power washing and power washing.
You can tell, it's a very bright place down there.
The RAS pumps, had two new RAS pumps, they're finally installed. Uh, ran into an issue with one of the VFDs when they tried to pair it to the new pumps. Uh, the one VFD threw a code, and it was actually, the code's been on there for over five hundred days, and the VFD couldn't be repaired, it had to be replaced. It's the nature of the beast. Both RAS pumps are working. I didn't really like the performance of one of the pumps, spoke with the contractor, and they are going to replon it free of charge. Get rid of the elbow, uh, those kill pumps.
Like free.
The, uh, positive display blower that got put in, and about three to five days later, it seized up. Working with the supplier right now on a warranty issue on that. Other than that, the, um, chlorine and sulfur scale got done working. They were actually not working since two thousand eighteen. Other than that, that's, that's about it.
Amazing, when you get done, when you're, what you can get done, a little bit effort.
Yeah.
Good job down there. The place looks really good.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
It's been a long time since that sewer plant's looked that good down there.
It's come a long way in a short time.
Long way. Those buildings down there were so full of junk and garbage that they were literally holding junk and garbage. And now they, now they house our vehicles and they house work benches and toolboxes and they're usable again.
Yeah, we had finer agents moved in there and Jason and those guys really helped out a lot down there.
Huge difference in, in four months.
Yes.
So, look, look where we'll be in another seven. We shine like a new penny.
I believe in June, Todd and Drake will start their orientation for the apprenticeship program.
Do we lose, do we lose them during the week?
No.
No?
No, um.
Refresh my memory again.
The apprenticeship program is basically they'll learn from me and Jason on it. I will do reports at the end of each week on what they did. And I'll submit that through the alliance and, and they have finance authority. Uh, but once, twice a month, they will do them for a day to go to classes. One, one of them, the town's gonna have to pay, I think, eleven hundred dollars for their training. And the other one, we're gonna get, the town's gonna get reimbursed up to seventy-four thousand for two years.
Right.
For their wages.
Fantastic. Saving that money.
Say, doesn't, we get reimbursed for that after the physical year then, right?
Uh, I'm not exactly sure. I want it's quarter, every six months, how it actually the reimbursement is.
It's correct, so the, when it's complete.
Okay, I'm not sure on it.
That's a two-year course, ain't it, right?
Yes.
It becomes credit, so.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay, great job. Larry?
Oh, dang. Well, I'm a repulsive guy. Uh, I tell, with this pandemic going on right now, people have been, uh, outspoken, you might say? And been doing a lot of improvements at town, and I've written a lot of permits on, uh, fences, porches, re-roofs, uh. I'm trying to think what else, but, uh, it's been, it's been pretty busy writing permits. Uh, people ask me that, uh, how can we write the permits when the town hall is closed? Uh, I worked out, uh, talking with the clerk's office, that I could figure out the cost of permit and they could pay for it, drop it in a slot, and go ahead and, and start their work. And either the town employees or it'll be mailed to them their copy of the permit. Uh, mine, I like to get my permit, uh, copied quicker than what it has been in the past, but I think Laura's been kinda busy. This way, if I get my copy, or if I don't get my copy, then I can file up and make sure that they do get theirs, if not, then fine will be assessed. But, uh, how, how long will the town hall be, uh, closed to the public? Do you have any?
It's, it's opened back up this week and you just knock on the door and then you let one person in at a time.
Okay, so I could go in?
Yes.
Knock on the door and that now? Okay, so I've been kinda staying my distance, but, uh.
Bring candy or cookies or something.
Yeah.
But like Jason was saying, uh, I think I've been cleaning up the town and the people around here have been doing some home improvements. Uh, good to see, so.
I'll need to get with you too, Larry, pretty soon. I wanna do some building over on mine, so probably in a couple of days I get with you.
Alright.
Yeah, I need, are you, can you with me, I believe they got a drawing here for you.
You got what?
I got a drawing here for you for my remodel of my house.
Well.
Okay, are, are you done with your, are you done with your report, Larry?
Well, I mean.
I'll get with you later, buddy.
Yeah, get with me later, Joe get with me later, yes, but, uh.
Anybody here from the fire department? Somebody here from the fire department? Okay. We need to, uh, the CARES Act came out. They're offering, uh, up to forty-six thousand dollars, uh, for COVID-related expenses. Uh, the town has assigned a certificate and mail it to be eligible, and we need a motion to allow the president to sign the certificate for the CARES Act.
I'm in your motion for it.
Move the second and then, then we, uh, allow the president to sign the, uh, certificate for the CARES Act. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Most of you care. Old business. Did we do anything?
No.
With the planning commission secretary?
No, that was.
No, we decided.
That was tables.
Put on the table because, yeah, that was gonna be discussed again.
Okay, it's back for the third time. Maybe the final time. Um, I'm not gonna give my opinion until after it's over with, so what, what do you think?
What do you want me to do? I saw that in your minutes and I didn't.
The, the, uh, planning commission, uh, I was planning commission president for sixteen years and stuff, and the planning commission always had a secretary on the planning commission as one of the members, and they did the minutes and they turned the minutes into the meeting, or into the town hall. Now the salary ordinance has a planning commission secretary that's being paid sixty dollars a month.
That's not a member of it?
That's, uh, not, no, a, a member above and beyond.
Okay.
Um, I think with the, giving my opinion anyway, but I think, uh, with, with our financial status, that it's, you know, spending sixty dollars a month to have, you know, Dwayne was, was doing it. Um. I question the point there that, you know, you're paying a, a clerk treasuries an extra sixty dollars that's making minutes during clerk treasure time that's being paid above and beyond on two different salaries at that point. I don't think that's right. Um. I don't think that we ought to have a secretary that's outside the bounds of the, of the planning commission. It should be somebody that three willies it themselves. It wasn't a big deal. We did it for years. That's my opinion.
Well, I was, I was on, at the meeting, I was on the fence, however, you just clarified something in regards to that. These planning commission meetings are dur, are during his normal workout, correct?
Normal?
No.
They're in the evening.
So it's above and beyond, what?
The minutes should be done at the town hall during the day.
They're, they're done by him though, at a meeting that they have.
Laura's been doing all the minutes.
No. On this, uh, sometimes she does, on these, on these I do my own, so.
The minute should be done by.
Purely discretionary. So the statute says they can have somebody, but it's a may, it's not a shall. So it could be like you said, one of the members volunteers to do it, or they can hire, so it's purely discretionary.
Isn't that sixty dollars a month and you only get paid when you have a meeting?
Right, that's. If you only have a meeting.
If you only have two meetings a year, he's only gonna get a hundred and twenty dollars.
The planning commission member goes out and, and does the legwork outside of the meeting and, and everything, and they, they get paid thirty dollars for, per meeting. And we're gonna pay sixty dollars to somebody that's gonna sit at the meeting and write the minutes up for what happened in the fifteen or twenty minutes that they're there.
Well, they make it so that the planning commission president has, writes the, writes the notes too. My issue is, is if we don't have somebody representing the town itself, making sure that the, that these minutes are being done and are actually being turned in to the town hall and properly recording them, that's my issue. I mean, we can let it go wayside where if we're not, since we're not involved, I mean, we're, we're at the meetings, but who's gonna, who's responsible for making sure that those meetings, that those minutes are done and done properly?
Well, when I was on it, we had somebody do it, and they went right to the office, to the, to the clerk.
Because the state board council's supposed to.
You have to have that show that you've had minutes.
Before, I seen, I seen Rosalie doing it before. I was building inspector a few years back, Rosalie, I mean, you was on a planning committee with, uh, Gina, and Rosalie was there taking the minutes. I seen her a couple of times on them, when we was at them meetings.
She was never at the meetings I was at.
Yeah, I don't know.
The, uh.
I have no problem getting rid of the secretary. As long as we have, i- if the planning, planning commission president is either in charge of writing the notes or having somebody there to, but he would ultimately be responsible for the, the actual turning in of the notes and everything else, then I don't have a problem with getting rid of the sixty, the, the, whatever, the, the secretary.
Look, let, let me throw a different spin on it. The park board, when, when it's enacted, does ten thousand times the work of a planning commission member and gets paid nothing for their work. And they have their minutes that have to be recorded at the meeting, that's done by their own people and turned into the town hall, and they get nothing. And they work ten thousand times harder than a planning commission member, been on both boards many years. Where is it right? Joe?
I'm not saying nothing. You know.
Carrie?
I am in agreement with Brian. I think that someone from the planning commission can take the minutes, whether, and like you said, the president is responsible for turning those minutes and making sure they're documented properly.
That's my biggest concern with all this is, is making sure we got the documentation.
I don't see the necess, I don't, I don't see it necessary to pay an extra secretary.
So the president of the planning commission can ensure that those are done.
Correct.
Yep.
Have one?
Sounds good to me.
Do we need to make motions to change it in the, it's ordinance twenty-twenty dash oh five?
Well, I need to change your ordinance for you.
Yeah.
I gotta change your ordinance.
Well, there's another, we're, we're going for, for more here.
Okay.
I'm sorry. We, we were in agreement with changing the holidays to getting rid of the, um, two days for the voting and putting in the Christmas Eve and the Friday after Thanksgiving Day, correct?
Black Friday.
Yeah, to get rid of the election days itself, that was, yeah, that was something that they discussed. I still have the little reservations, but being our busy time of the year to give them that much time, I did. But, cause if there was nothing going on, and there was nothing to say, that we couldn't just as the town council give the day off and.
But that's above and beyond the thirteen vote.
You're absolutely right, however, it's.
So what do we need to do here? We need to, we need to.
Well, the, the, if we're all in agreement about removing the two days that were for voting, you know, and, and there were county days that were off for, for voting and stuff, then and we put in Christmas Eve and the Friday after Thanksgiving Day to replace those.
Is that in your ordinance as well? Is that something I'll just change?
Yeah, it's just.
As well? Okay.
The holidays itself is specified in the ordinance. If we take out the election days.
It makes a lot more sense.
So I can just make them a, an or, new ordinance, or amending ordinance to that for you.
Have one? Good. You?
Yep.
Yep.
Move right along. Here's the one.
Need to vote on it or disagree on it?
No, just agree on that.
We're in agreement.
Um, the other one was the comp time. Discussing that, um. I put out that I was okay with forty hours comp time. But it had to be used by the end of the year, if I remember right.
Yep.
There was questions on that Amber of whether or not that was legal or not. There was questions on that Amber, whether or not that was legal or not, or does it roll over? After thinking about it for a while, I'm okay with it rolling over because if it's forty at the end of it, that doesn't really make a difference. It's forty no matter what. So.
So do you want comp time then?
Right.
So I don't think, I think your policy says you don't need comp time.
There was no comp time, but they brought it to us. There was some issues in regards to when to actually use it and everything else and Dennis wanted to speak with you in reference to the FLSA rules regarding comp time because according, from everything that I read, it was saying that you can, you have one year from the time of accrual that you could use, that you had to be used of uh, comp time and you shouldn't be forcing to use it by the end of the year. However, I did find contradictory things saying that we could force them to do it, however. Comp time is comp time and whether you roll it over or whether you don't, it's always gonna be there regardless. The only thing is, is if we are gonna force them to use it by the end of the year, then I would stipulate that no comp time is earned after in, in the months of November and December because we're just kinda shooting ourselves in the foot. If we, if we, if we're letting these guys take comp time, they accrue comp time in November and then we have to give it to them by the end of the year. This is, that's our busiest season.
You mean let them roll over?
That's why I said is, is we need to let that roll over because.
Otherwise you're forcing us to take a bunch of guys off at the end of the year.
Especially during our busy time. We, we need these guys available, be out plowing and doing what they need to be doing. If we let them roll it over, then it, it becomes, it, it's a pointless moot because they're always gonna have forty hours on the books and they can take it whenever they, they want to. And it's up to, it's up to the supervisors to decide who's actually gonna take off and how many people, cause he doesn't want to be short, especially especially during a, a snowstorm that's coming in and you got somebody on a week's comp time. That's, that, that becomes the issue.
So you're fine with forty hours comp time as long as it rolls over at the end of the.
I'm fine with forty hours of comp time for the guys as long as we let them roll it over and we, we, it's never an issue to, that we're not gonna force them to take that comp time by the end of the.
Joe?
Me too.
Same.
I'm fine with that. Okay, we're all in consensus.
So you could roll it over indefinitely if they're employed here, okay.
You just can't go over forty hours.
We just can't go over forty hours.
Then if they would leave, you'd have to pay them out though.
Right.
Correct, yeah, that we, that, yeah, that.
Thank you guys.
Once you get in, you can't leave.
The guys we have now are being forced to retire here, so. There's only a few people drawing pensions here. We need to make that a little bit bigger.
So I need to update your policy and I was also looking at your ordinance real quick and I, I don't think it spells out in your ordinance the holiday time. I think that's in your policy, so I gotta change that too.
No, it does. I thought it was, I, did I put?
I think we did, but we talked about since it was already in the policy that it didn't need to be redundant.
Yeah, but I thought we were gonna take it, yeah. We're gonna take it out of salary ordinance, put it in the employee handbook.
Any new business?
Well, the, were we gonna discuss the employee handbook itself?
Was there a problem with that?
Says grass orders?
We've already, we've already did that.
Oh, then, oh, that was what you were talking about with the employee handbook. I'd, I'd like to extend a little bit more on the handbook. I know there's been kind of confusion in regards to what we're following, what we're not. We all, at the beginning of the year, decided to put this handbook together with, in reference to what we were, how we were gonna proceed with running the town. However, there is some things that have been kinda passed aside that trying to figure out what exactly we're, we're wanting to do here with, with some of this stuff. Town council has, has put in the handbook that we wanted to be part of the hiring process, which we are part of the hiring process, however we've had two employees that were hired that I didn't even know about. I, I still haven't even met the new officer I found out just a couple of weeks ago that we hired a new officer.
The marshal has always been tasked with hiring the part timers by himself and stuff. That's always been standard practice. A full-time officer and stuff has always been, the town council has always sit down with the interviews and went through all the stuff. It's a full-time thing and and, and we got some money going out. All the power has come through the marshal and stuff, so the, there's never been a part-time officer that I'm aware of that's ever been bought before the town council to ask.
Who just did it. Scott Afkowski was, his application was brought to bring him back.
To bring him back?
To bring him, well, to bring him, to hire him back, cause he had lost his job when Dave was hired as full-time. He got, they got rid of all the part timers then.
Okay, well.
As far as.
If he did that, that's fine, but he didn't have to.
As well as, that, then we need to address that issue because that is something that I'd like to know who the officers are, at least be able to speak with them or talk to them or at least meet them. I haven't even laid eyes on this guy.
So, so when he hires a part timer, then the next council meeting, he can bring him in and introduce him to the board?
Yes.
For part timers?
Yes.
Full timers we will be involved in.
I, I would love to be able to meet our, all of our officers, all of our town, all of our town employees, whether they're part timer or full-time. I like to be able to meet them, at least know them, so that they get to know us, we get to know them. I didn't even know this guy was on again, except for the last two weeks, two weeks ago is when I actually found out we hired a part-time person. I've heard the guy on the radio, however, he was using seven oh three and his name showed up as Joel Shannon, so I thought maybe he brought Joel Shannon back. So it was kind of a, so then I started asking questions in regards to what was going on and Joe is the first one that I think uh, answered me of, of they hired Dom Garrett. It, it, I just think it's, common courtesy would be to be able to bring it to the town council so that we, we get to meet our, all of our employees, not just our full-time employees.
You're not looking for.
I'm not looking for, he's.
You're not looking over the, the, the application, you just wanted to meet the person.
Well, I'd like to be able to look over the application, but it's his ultimate thing, but I'd like to at least look at the guy's.
I think we should meet the officers, but I don't think we should divulge into the police business. He, that's a separate entity and I think the marshal has the right to hire who he wants. I don't think he should, we should have to second guess him, myself.
The marshal system is a different situation because the marshal is controlled by the town council and stuff and the deputies work for the town council or de- work for the marshal. The town council has absolutely no power over those deputies and stuff. If the deputies do wrong and the marshal doesn't do something about it, we go after the marshal for not doing his job. The uh, I'm all for if you hire a part timer and stuff, you bring him in the next council meeting and then see who it is and say, hey, this is Joe Blow and he's gonna be working part-time for us. But on a full-time position, um, we're gonna, we're gonna be involved in the hiring process. I can tell you the time that I worked here, uh, the councils, we, we interviewed together. They always asked my opinion in the end of what was going on and stuff and they always took who I recommended. But they were always in the hiring process and stuff and knew what was going on. Are you good with that?
Yeah, that's what, that, that's what I wanted to do, get straight.
I just wanna, wanna clear up first. Part-time guy, bring him in, introduce him. You guys are okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Not a problem.
Anything else? Clerk's report.
Okay, uh, first off, uh, the three months of no shut-off ordinance of the governor of, of this virus has been expired on June eighth.
Seven. June seventh.
It should be eight.
No, it's seven.
He got numbers in his head.
June seventh, twenty twenty. Also, I wanna talk about the, he already talked about this too. We have, we're qualified for the virus, uh, virus uh, received funds. I have to put it all together because we have to qualify, we have so mu- much, but we actually put paperwork and paperwork and and I'll talk with Dennis as I'm gonna do this. Uh, also, um, Maverick, that, Maverick Bay, close, and that's uh, May.
Twenty.
Twenty fifth.
So the shut-off orders and stuff on June seventh, then the town will start shutting off utilities for payments that may. So, I think maybe we can put that on our site and stuff so we let people know.
Absolutely.
Fair war.
You do it?
Yeah. You too?
You can do both of them.
Got you.
On the, on the clerk's office, I wanna talk about this pay gov that we've got going. You're switching around to this pay gov and there's been numerous problems with the pay gov. I don't know if it's on our end or if it's their end, but the people are coming in, there've been several complaints that we've found that they, money come out of their bank, but it wasn't shown that their utilities were paid on the report.
That's common.
And it's, it's a uh, thing where the people have been coming, people have been coming in and, and instead of looking at it, they're being told to go check, call a number and go take care of it ourselves, themselves and stuff. I personally think we're offering the service. If we're offering the service and it's not right, then it's up to us to find out why it's not right and get that report back to that citizen. We, we owe that to them. You know, and if pay gov isn't working correctly and there's that many problems and you say Walkers had problems with it.
Yeah, it's something with the delay.
I can't, how much information is, are these people?
But there is some type of delay in there. Um, I know we had several issues where we actually had shut people off and they had paid through pay gov.
And that's one of the problems we're having here because.
And, yeah, it was an issue with, like I said, I can't really remember exactly what the issue, but I wanna say there was some type of delay in there that caused.
Cause they could show that they.
Cause these guys show that.
He's not getting the report for it.
That's what it is. Uh, I don't think you can, what was it? Maybe you had to shut down the system or something and you wouldn't get that till the next day or something, but if they paid it, they could tell you.
It doesn't go until the next business day and by the time they actually process it the next business day, you're looking at noon, one o'clock in the afternoon before it actually.
The problem we're having is a, a week or two ago.
Well, well, and right.
Yeah, you shouldn't have, I wouldn't think you'd have it like that, yeah. Usually it's a day.
But if you pay it on a weekend, you're probably not gonna see it till Monday, possibly even Tuesday before it actually comes through, so I'm sure there's a delay with it, but if it's, if it's a week or more, yeah, that's, that's not good if we're shutting people off and they pay their bill through the pay gov.
And that's something you could probably even call Walkers and join and ask them what their issue is with that and they could probably tell you.
Well, I was in the office the other day when they called them and stuff and the guys all chipper on the phone, and then when he used it, it worked.
It works.
And then uh, when somebody else comes to do the stuff, does it, now it's not working, it did the same thing.
There's also a, a code or whatever and I can't remember what it was at my time. It is maybe we need to try and get that code. What, what is our, our uh, code that we're supposed to be?
Yeah, the code's on.
It's like a five-digit code or something like that. Maybe we need to get that out there too to the people so that they know that it's not eight, seven, six, five through or not eight, seven.
Somebody, somebody did that to me and so they posted on there, they said the number is eight, six, seven, five, three, oh, nine, so. I, I went ahead and forwarded to the person and said, well, here's the number and I said, I waited a few minutes, I went, I said, wait a minute, that's a song.
Besides, that, that uh, information was right in our, our, on the window, so they can, our codes and everything.
Yeah, I, I, I did that, but I, I mean, like I said, if we get it out there on Facebook, we, that should give enough uh.
Maybe we need to.
Put on the council site and, and something to put up there permanently on that thing.
Yeah, or post it once a month at the beginning of the month or something.
Put it on their bill.
I'll do that. I'll put the uh, pay gov thing.
I'm putting that on KHweathernews.org too.
I wonder, or can that be done? Can the, can the code for pay gov be put on the bill itself on our, on the paper bill?
It can, but it's gonna be a charge again.
Yeah.
Cause you gotta call key stuff for that.
We don't, we don't need to go through that. They charge us seven hundred dollars to do some of the stuff and that's just ridiculous.
It'd be a thousand dollars.
Yeah, no, I, uh, we'll, we'll deal with it a different way and it'll be a lot cheaper.
Um, you guys already seen the financial outlook and stuff. What do you have on that?
I got some more information. Uh, I just want you to know that the, we have one more problem with the, with the bank information we, we've been talking about. Because of this virus, I need to talk to them face-to-face and I've been there several, several times and it's in the closer, cause before we were twenty thousand, now I'm fighting over a little over a thousand dollars now, so. Also, the, the bond is done and completed and all the old bond is gone and that's all I have to tell you.
Cool. Attorney's report.
So the ordinance you passed uh, pertained to the extension of your Impa contract to twenty fifteen. There's a certification that needs to be signed by um, the president and the clerk to go along with it. They will also need a letter from me that I have reviewed it as well, so I brought that in, so um, when you return the ordinance, a copy of the ordinance and certification and also include my letter with it.
Did you get that done?
Your minutes you approved, what was the date of your special meetings in May? Was it May first and May seventh? Can you double check that?
We have May seven. May seven.
We had two.
You had two?
Had two.
Yeah, we had two, one back-to-back.
May one, May seven.
There are two on that one.
So is it May one and May seven?
Yeah.
Okay, because.
No, May fourth and May eleventh were the special meetings.
Yes.
For May.
Okay, so we're gonna need to correct it because the special meeting minutes, um, the dates aren't right on it either. So if you look at it, you're just gonna need to make a motion to correct it. If you just take a look on what I circled, the dates aren't right either. So it was May fourth and eleventh?
Since the, since the shutdown, our actual last meeting. When was our last meeting for um?
May seventh, we had a special meeting in May first.
Oh, I see where she's, yeah, I see where she put it.
Right there, right there, yeah, okay.
So it was May sixteen?
So, it was May first and May?
May fourth and May eleventh were the two special meetings dealing with Impa, the Impa contracts.
Fourth and the eleventh.
So you just need a motion to correct those in your minutes and dates.
We had a special meeting April twenty ninth.
So we get a motion to correct the minutes from the special meetings on the fourth and the eleventh concerning Impa.
Make a motion that we correct the minutes.
In the second, we correct the minutes on four eleven, uh, or May fourth and May eleventh.
Correct. Let's explain.
In favor? Close? Correct.
Okay, and then I'm working on the paperwork um, to get you out of the I U R C. Um, I'm gonna hopefully have a detailed email uh, coming up. I've started it. I had with the whole coronavirus, got put on the back burner and now I gotta pull up everything again and refresh my memory before I refresh down the, the details of it.
And your contract's coming up, you're so churling.
Yeah.
Are we, are we gonna be molested with uh, are we gonna be molested with retaining you?
Does it, yeah, you, you want to again?
Yes.
Okay. It went very quick.
Undoubtedly.
Okay, I'll just draft up something simple, like I'll just extend it for the rest of the year.
Okay, sounds great.
Okay, great.
Welcome aboard.
Agreed.
We love to have you.
I think there's gonna be a problem if we read that one.
No, 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 not at all.
Dump you already.
Uh, no, 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 no. It's nice to have a uh, qualified attorney at the meeting.
All these wrinkles I'm getting at a young age.
That's right, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna add a few more, so.
We've done an exceptional job for what you've been tasked with. We told you when you got, when you interviewed for.
Why joy it.
We told you it was gonna be a chore at least for the first year, so we do appreciate everything.
No problem.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, you're reachable anytime that we wanna, you know, if I hang up the phone because she didn't answer, she called back a couple nights later, you know, so. It's uh, and emails, well, you know, I love to forward emails to you, so.
She said if I had to scream.
Yeah, she screamed. Anything else?
She works, she works all hours.
With the paper that you had, the, the, the thing that you said had to be signed, do we need to do something with it now?
You guys just need to sign it after the meeting, the certification, but that, my letter goes with your certification, the ordinance to Impa. And that's it.
Any public comments? Any public comments? Any public comments going, going, gone? Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion that way.
Second. Second adjourn.